Let's start the Call the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, March 2, 2021 at 6:13 PM. We have council members appearing by Zoom and by phone. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So, this is Bill.
Second, Linda.
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. And Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is, I'm going to, I know not all of you can see the flag, but there is a flag over the shoulder of Inga Cushman. So if you can visualize the flag for those of you calling in, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, and live with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Inga, do we have anybody joining us this evening for public comments that you're aware of?
I am seeing people from the media and then Annette. I don't know, Annette, are you here in support of the library item?
Yes, I am.
Okay, did you want to speak at all right now or no?
Sorry, took me a second to unmute again. I can, I just wanted to thank the city council for supporting the library and for bringing this forward and considering it. I think the library has brought great value to our community. Even in a pandemic, they have been in front of it and helping people, turning their Wi-Fi out to the parking lot so kids can do homework. So the value is much greater than the cost of paying off what's left of the renovation. So I appreciate the council considering it and I hope it passes tonight.
Alright, thank you, Annette. Is there anybody in the waiting room, Inga? Okay, we'll go on to, I'm sorry?
There isn't. Sorry, I just wanted to verbalize it too.
Oh, okay. Item number five, approval of common council meeting minutes from February 17 of 2021. Larry is raising his hand, motioning to approve. Devin has raised his hand, seconding to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Excuse me.
Yes, Linda.
If I join with my video now, do I have to do anything in particular so that I don't blast you all with the sound?
I would probably hang up from your phone before you officially log on with the video.
Okay, I'm going to do that right now.
Okay.
Alright. So I will assume that Linda will join us. I will wait a minute exactly and see if she can join us and then we'll just get started on our 2020 year in review.
She's here.
There she is.
Inga, do I have, I have the ability to share my screen?
Yeah, uh, not yet. There we go. Now you do.
Alright, so what I'm gonna do is in a moment here, I will share my screen. Can folks see that?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, so what we would like to do is one of kind of our favorite nights of the year. It's always, you know, good to look back to see, you know, where we, what we've done over the last 365 days and each year presents its own unique set of challenges, but nothing, certainly nothing like this year. So although we're already in March of 2021, 2020 is still not far enough in the rearview mirror for most of us, but nonetheless, we'll take a look and, you know, kind of look back at what we've done over the last year. So. Here we go. As I kind of noted, 2020 was a year unlike any other, but despite all of it, the city Milton again saw unprecedented levels of growth while maintaining a high level of service to our community in a safe and responsible manner. You know, this whole thing kind of started on March 17 of 2020. So we were only about three or two and a half months into the year before the pandemic kind of could, took hold. But, you know, we were in preparations and we had several conversations among staff to kind of prepare for it even before the safer at home order was issued on March 17. So even though, you know, it was a year unlike any other, business continued as usual. Streets were plowed, water was treated, you know, police responded to calls, grass was mowed and development happened. And it was, it was not in spite of the pandemic, but it occurred nonetheless. One other thing that took place throughout this project is we had talked about in the fall of 2019, doing a strategic plan. And then as the pandemic kind of started, we hit the pause button on that, trying to figure out how in the world are we going to do a strategic plan when we can't meet in person, when we can't really hold public meetings, when we can't have, you know, public input sessions or vignettes. But as everybody in the, in the community and in the organization and in the world frankly, started to kind of get used to what was going on for better or worse, you know, Inga, you know, really wanted to forge ahead and we are so glad that she did because it really turned out to be an excellent process and one that, you know, I think in some ways probably benefited from the pandemic, as weird as that sounds, because it made it easier for people to participate. Holding several public listening sessions and stakeholder meetings over Zoom as people became comfortable with it, I think we probably had a greater attendance and input. And, you know, having the survey sent out, everybody was sitting at their computer all day long anyways, so why not fill out a survey while you're there? So this was the first strategic plan completed in over 13 years and it really will set the framework for how we go about our business moving forward. In 2020, we saw over $27 million worth of equalized value growth. We saw an overall, that's, that's a hundred, it's over $100 million Milton has grown or 25% in the last four years alone. And because of this growth, it allowed us to lower our tax rate in 2021 and collect less tax dollars in 2021 than we did in 2020. So some of those are kind of forward thinking, but it's really because of what happened in 2020 that allowed us to do some of those great things in 2021 that we're living right now. So. So there come some of the kind of highlights from the year and then, you know, as, as folks are probably used to this by now, I've done this probably six or seven years in a row now, we'll go from, break it down from department to department. And since we're all here now, what I'll do is I will turn it, the first one on the agenda, no, no particular order. I think it probably came in based on how the slides were prepared last year and how they were prepared last year was probably from the year before. So Police Department is first up. So Scott, Chief Mark Ward, if you have, if there's anything on this list that you really want to highlight or, or if you want to talk about all of them, feel free if you're still here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna read the slide. Professors in my life say never read PDF or never read PowerPoint slides, so I'm not gonna do that. I'm, I'm, you're gonna hear this over and over again tonight, but I'm so proud of my staff who had dapped in the way we did business at the Police Department and in a lot of ways we still are and they went through it with amazing resilience. I've spoken to y'all before how lucky we were that although some of us have tested positive over the last 12 months, none of us did at the same time. Made us to manage well from a staffing standpoint. But yet in preparing my annual report and reviewing our numbers for the year, we weren't that far off last year. Obviously, some of the proactive things like fix stops and those kind of going out and doing things had tailed off simply because they're just weren't along the road or down, our injury accidents were down, a lot of that just because all of us were hunkered down for a while. But yeah, we made up for it through other things. We had a bunch more security checks because that's when we fill some time is, is we check and make sure our community's safe. Oh. I think the rest of the slide speaks for itself. I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Scott. And then I added this slide because Scott created that PowerPoint list and he, he had a bullet point in there that just said Assessor of the Year 2020. And that's Scott, he's humble, but I, but I wanted to add this because it really is a big deal that our chief was recognized by the State Association for being such an outstanding leader in, in his profession, but also in the community. So I added this slide partially to embarrass Scott, but, but not really, to really highlight how fortunate we are to have Scott in our community. So.
I don't know if the eye roll translates through a Zoom meeting, but.
It did, it did, yeah. Next up, we have the Milton Public Library. I think Ashley's still on.
Yep, I am. I wanna kind of say the same thing about my staff. We, amazing staff. It was rough for a while just because of who could work in the library, but we restructured library operations multiple times due to COVID, kind of back and forth curbside and being open, trying to figure out what we can do. But still, we still provided a high, like a high quality and creative services for our community. We really embraced, we making videos, we made over 200 videos and still provide over 500 programs last year. We had 24, about 2,400 curbside pickups. We RFID taped our entire library collection. That's over 31,000 items that we put a sticker in to put in our system. I won't say the pandemic was a good thing, but that this allowed us to do this in a much quicker fashion than we would have done before. We also completed our strategic plan. We relaunched our friends of the Milton Public Library. I was very excited to get that going again. We have made significant progress at Story Gardens. I'm gonna give a shout out to Inga for helping move that along. And we just stay connected with our patrons and I think one of my big concerns with us shutting down was losing that connection we had with our community, with our patrons. I think our amazing staff stayed connected and hopefully down the road and the months to come, we'll be able to bring people back and be that busy, noisy, crazy library again. And we hired two new staff members who are amazing.
In the part that always sticks out to me and, you know, I talk about the library as often as I can in glowing terms, but no, that last bullet point that Ashley put on her, on her list there that had fun, that's what always sticks out to me about the library staff, always sticks out to me about the library environment. And even during the pandemic, when things were challenging for a lot of people and students were out of school and parents were struggling to find ways to entertain their children in a constructive and educational fashion, the Milton Public Library was still there. And although their doors weren't open for big chunks of the year, they were still out in the community in a virtual setting, having fun, doing unique programming, getting involved in, in areas that were probably somewhat outside their comfort zone, but, you know, knowing Jamie and some of them, it's well within their comfort zone. But that's the part that is always so cool about our library and the adaptiveness and creativeness. And it's, it really is such an asset to the community. So I did not put that had fun, Ashley did, so.
Yeah, I just shout out again to my staff. They're amazing. It's fun working here. It really is. Not Dave goes by that not laughing.
Next up, we have Public Works where they have no fun ever. I'm just kidding. I don't, if Howie, are you, are you on with us still or, or Mark or both of you? Do you want to tag team it?
Both of us are probably.
Mother's brothers type routine?
Yeah. I guess, can you hear that or not? Is that alright? Anyways, you know, you've got the list here and, you know, probably the one thing even 2020 with the pandemic is that we probably had like 40 different schedule changes down here. The guys have never been used to working alone. They had to adjust, almost like separate some departments, things like that. And they actually handled it pretty well. And I'd say probably the one thing of all these things is we did keep progressing forward, you know, which was kind of nice. We didn't stay the same. We still got the different things done like Elizabeth Street and some of those things, capital improvement program. Even though it wasn't as easy, we got more efficient and just kept going forward. So that was, that was probably, probably like the highlight of the year is things just keep moving for us. So, and we had some experience disappear for retirements and we gained new people that, that are doing really well. So. And I guess probably too, we didn't really get a lot of notice from the public that things were any different. So.
Yeah, yeah. When you consider the fact that there's, you know, 5,700 residents in the city of Milton and, and the fact that I would say the vast, vast, vast majority of them, probably 99% or more, didn't notice anything changed. And that's exactly the way it should have been. That's what we wanted it to be. And, you know, there's always people who are looking for a reason to be upset and, you know, but our goal is to serve the entire community and do it in a safe and efficient manner. And Public Works absolutely did that. And, you know, Howie kind of glossed over, you know, losing Donnie Zimmerman right before the pandemic or, you know, right at the onset of the pandemic, you know, could have been a tremendous challenge. And obviously, losing Donnie is, is always a difficult position to replace, you know, 34 years in the Public Works Department, that historical knowledge out the door. But, you know, Paul Smith has stepped up and done a tremendous job. And, you know, really, the, the beat goes on for those guys out in Public Works and commend them for that, especially in a challenging year, being out there and kind of not really knowing, you know, that was the hardest part about the pandemic is seemed like every day there was new advice and the advice they had told you the day before was now wrong. So trying to navigate that world was difficult and Public Works was right in the middle of it all the time. And, you know, making sure that we have clean water is vital to life and that, you know, they continued to, to do that exceptionally. And Mark was here too, so. Anything else, Howie or Mark? Alright, next up, we have City Finances. So Dan is still on. I assume he is. He wants to take this one.
Nothing super exciting, but as we've discussed for the last six and a half years now, we're finally starting to see some of the fruits and measurable ways in terms of our debt ratio. We're, we're below 50% for the first time since the 20th century. And next year on May 1, our sewer utility is going to be officially debt-free. So that's the first one that's going to be debt-free in this journey of weirdness. And then even though interest rates bottomed out in, in April of 2020, because of some of the way I had the investment structure, we still were able to earn about $112,000 in interest income. I can guarantee you it won't be six figures in 2021. So that was, that was good for the fortuitous planning. So we are able to still meet our budget even in a down year, economically speaking for investment. You're muted now.
First time since the 20th century. Now that's, there's a headline. Next up, we have Elections and, you know, this one is, is a little challenging because right at the end of 2020, our longtime employee and clerk, Leanne Schrader, left to greener pastures. And so Inga stepped up admirably for the first election in 2021, but in 2020 was one of those big years. And not to mention the fact that the elections were incredibly consequential, there was four of them. And Milton, you know, came out in force, you know, casting over 6,500 ballots and, you know, certainly utilized the absentee portion of that voting structure, whether that be in-person absentee or mail-in absentees. You can see that, you know, over half of the ballots cast, almost, you know, really almost two-thirds were cast in the absentee format, meaning they either came into City Hall and cast theirs, that absentee ballot in advance of the election or mailed theirs in. And 278 new registrations. So that's exciting too. And it means, you know, people were, we see that in during presidential elections, but, you know, we saw new registrations even in the February primary. So hopefully that's a trend that continues. Inga, did you want to add anything to that for Dan?
Nope, I think you covered it.
Some city statistics, you know, these are mostly provided by Dan and Carrie Cheeseborough and Rebecca Anderson up front and Brenda Matthews as well over in Public Works. But, you know, these are just kind of some fun numbers. They probably don't mean a whole lot to, to folks who are watching this from the outside in or even folks, you know, who may be even part of our organization. What does that mean? Processed 8,263 cash, check, credit card transactions at the window. You know, that basically, that means that, you know, folks come into City Hall or stop at City Hall. That was obviously, you know, different last year, but still 8,000 transactions. The vast majority is, I'm sure we're through the, through the mail or the Dropbox. You know, folks still kind of, kind of do it old school, but we do continue to see an increase in auto pay and online payments. So that's always encouraging as well. You know, I don't know that anything particularly sticks out on this over other, other years, but, you know, 170 title searches, that means that properties, transactions occurred a lot in 2020. Houses sold, properties sold, buildings sold. So that, you know, again, is, is a sign of economic activity, which is good. And, you know, one of the best ways that we have been able to communicate even pre-pandemic, but certainly during the pandemic, was through our social media accounts and we continue to see increased traction in those, in those, in those avenues, Facebook, Instagram, and I know Inga's on a number of other TikToks and whatnots, but I don't know.
I am not using TikTok.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Ashley's the TikToker.
Yes.
But, you know, those are, again, those, those may seem like kind of silly, you know, like, oh yeah, that's cute. But when you think about how often we as a council or we as, as an organization say, boy, how do we get the word out about this? How come, you know, how can we spread the word, you know, further and wider? 3,100 people are logged in, you know, are checking our Facebook account. Now granted, not all those people maybe live in the city of Milton, but, you know, that's still a huge chunk of people. So when the question is, is how do we engage our citizenry? How do we get people involved? How do we answer questions? How do we get the word out? It's 2021, that's how people are doing it. And we're continuing to see an increase in that and that is due almost entirely to Inga Cushman. And, and honestly, the folks at the library too, by kind of making sure that, you know, people are, I'm sure they both do one or the other and see each other. So if somebody goes on our Facebook page and, and sees some of our posts, they're inevitably going to see the library and vice versa. So, you know, that's kind of the way of the future. And, and although I'm, I'm only 39, I'm a bit of a curmudgeon when it comes to social media, but I understand that it is important and it's great to, that we continue to get traction in that world. Anything else? Dan or Inga, you want to add on that?
Nope, I think that does a pretty good job of covering it.
Next up, Economic Development. We hit some of these numbers earlier in the presentation, but over $27 million worth of new valuation growth in 2020. We were the second fastest growing community in Rock County. In 2019, we were the fastest. We barely got edged out by Evansville. But I have a sneaking suspicion with what's already happened in 2021, we're going to regain that crown in, in 2021. Over $46 million worth of private in commercial and industrial development. That's up, that's up $30 million from last year, from 2019. And that's a huge number. And what that is, is that's amount that individuals have invested in their private entity through construction or rehabilitation or additions. 11 new development projects, 10 new business startups, and we had three tax incremental finance district changes or creations. We created TIF 11. And then we did something that's only been done once before in the entire history of the state of Wisconsin. We did a creation subtraction where we created TIF 11 and subtracted from TIF 6. And that was a process and I will not bore anybody with that mainly because I never want to revisit that process ever again. I guarantee you, my life has been shortened because of it. But, you know, it is probably one of those things, maybe I'll go on a speaking tour about someday that will be very sparsely attended. But it, whoo, that was something. But we did it and that paved the way for Claus and Quality Chocolates to come to Milton, which will be one of the largest developments, probably the largest development in the history of Milton until something bigger comes along, which is not quite likely because it's probably going to be one of the biggest projects in Rock County in, in some time. So it was worth it in the end, I guess is my point. So, you know, we talked a lot about the pandemic and it was obviously the number one story in 2020. And, you know, I wanted to point out a couple of these bullet points because, you know, for, for folks who may, may forget or, or missed it or didn't, you know, maybe realize at the time, you know, the pandemic, we, we as an organization and, and the council and the elected officials recognize that the pandemic, you know, really didn't, you know, it, it hit everybody differently. But at the same time, it really didn't care who you were or what you did or, you know, what you owed or how you were trying to make a living. And there was very few things we could do as an organization to assist. But. You know, the mayor was very adamant and the council was very supportive of, we wanted to do as much as we could within our power to assist those business owners, to assist those, those residents, community members in trying to not add another burden to their plate or relieve a burden that was already on their plate. So these are just a few of the things that we did in 2020 to help that. Placing a moratorium on late fees associated with unpaid or delinquent utility bills, waive late fees for certain licenses and permit requirements, deferred the collection of 2019 property tax payments, reduce the fees associated with restaurant and bar alcohol licenses to counteract the loss of revenue, assisted developers and revising their agreements to mitigate obligations strained by the pandemic, and delayed the citywide revaluation until at least 2021. Those are all things that hopefully made life a little easier for folks and didn't put again, an additional burden on them during this very crazy and uncertain time. And I applaud the council and the mayor for taking, you know, such a proactive role on that. And, and, and I hope, you know, those who were able to realize some of those changes appreciate it as well. Now, here comes this, the fun part. This is the picture presentation that has now become kind of famous. Inga does such an awesome job with these. In years past, we just kind of had static pictures. But if, so I apologize for Bill and Teresa. If you guys are still on the phone, you won't be able to see this, but I can send it. We'll probably post it on our Facebook page or something, won't we?
Yeah, I have it posted on YouTube right now, but, um, did you share your screen with sound?
That's a great question. Do I, is there a way I can look, share sound? Okay, let's see it. Let's try. Here we go. If not, Inga's gonna narrate every picture. If not, Inga's going to narrate every picture. So those, again, just a few of the highlights from twenty twenty that. You know, those pictures always make it look like we had a lot of fun in twenty twenty, and we did, we did, but. You know, it's always nice to kind of remember some of those highlights, too, in a in a very visual way. So now that we're done with twenty twenty and we're already into twenty twenty one, we wanted to talk about just a couple of goals and initiatives that we have. For departments within twenty twenty one, and some of those are already underway, like implementing the lead service line replacement program. Updating the employee handbook to reflect the strategic plan, create an overall signage plan for the city of Milton. Update all of the job descriptions in the Department of Public Works. There are some that are kind of old, and we've had some turnover. In twenty twenty and we'll have more turnover in twenty twenty one. So now is always a good time to look at that. Create an overall tree planting plan for the city of Milton, create an art plan for the city of Milton, create a safety manual for the city of Milton. Onboard our new clerk who starts with us in two weeks and coordinate. The very complicated process of Clausen Quality Chocolate's manufacturing facility. Through their site plan and their rail construction and their road extensions and everything else that gets to go along with that. So. A lot on tap already for twenty twenty one. Some challenges in twenty twenty one. We will continue to combat the virus and the challenges it presents to staffing and morale. You know, we announced, the county announced this morning that they're moving to phase two. And, you know, we are, we are aware of that, and we're going to reopen our facilities. In the next coming days as well, but we also understand that the virus hasn't disappeared. And we hope members of the public remember that as well, and that although vaccines are starting to roll out and become more readily available to folks. We are certainly aware that it can strike again, and some of those folks. Who who have been fortunate to not be infected could become infected and that always. You know, would present a challenge to our staffing. We are a very small organization and each one of our departments has a minimal amount of staffing. So that is a challenge. Uncertainty in state funding levels related to the twenty twenty two budget process. Things that look a lot better than they did just a few six months ago or so. But again, we don't know for sure until the writing's on the wall. The budget has not been approved by the state legislature. There are many provisions within the governor's budget that are are wonderful for local governments. But we also know that many of those will likely be stripped out. So we, it's kind of a wait and see approach. There's retirements within our organization that we know are coming in twenty twenty one, and those will be very difficult positions to fill. Debt service continues to be a challenge, although we saw it's the first time since the twentieth century that we're down below fifty percent. We're still at forty four, and that still is a big number when it comes to how that impacts the tax rate. Trying to balance service delivery with priorities versus incidents. Oftentimes, things come up. And they seem to be, you know, very important at the moment, but, you know, we have to remember there's a holistic approach. I like that word that Bill Wilson used a couple of weeks ago. There is a holistic purpose that that we're out there doing. We've we've got a strategic plan. We've got a budget. We've got a comprehensive plan. And yes, incidents or or situations can arise, and we need to find a way to prioritize those and put those in their proper perspective. We're always trying to increase the tax base because, as we pointed out with one of those first slides, that's how we decrease the tax rate. It's the only way it works. There's no other way around it. And maintaining and preserving the Milton way of life. Some may say that those last two bullet points are in conflict with each other. But I think we believe as a council and as an organization that we can preserve the Milton way of life while having responsible growth. And growth that is, you know, that is conducive to our our kind of community. We're not chasing, you know, development. Development comes and and we evaluate each situation on a on a case by case basis. And I believe, yes, sixteen out of sixteen slides, that. Wraps up twenty twenty. At least wraps up my presentation. Because there's other items on the agenda related to twenty twenty. So. Any questions or thoughts or comments about the presentation that you may want to express or? Or things that I might maybe missed? Sometimes it's hard to think back a year.
I'll just go around and just check with anybody to see if there's any questions or comments. Bill Wilson, can you hear me?
I can indeed now.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to watch the picture show. Was sort of like being on hold with Verizon or something. But other than that, great information. Thank you.
Okay, and Inga. Is Linda by phone now? I believe so. Okay.
I am.
Linda, any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say that all of this information has been put together very orderly. And in a nice way for everyone to understand it, and thank you. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work in making this report and everything that you did last year.
Thanks, Lynette. Teresa, any questions or comments? Star six to unmute.
Okay, much like Linda said, thank you for all the information and it was a nice presentation. Everything looked terrific. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Larry?
Well done.
Very well put together.
And Ryan, thanks, Devin.
Very nice presentation. I also liked the picture video at the end.
That's always the highlight. Nobody likes to look at my face for all that time, so.
I would just like to comment that. There was a lot of stress in two thousand and twenty transitioning with very little notice. I I don't. I don't even know how to put it into words, but all of our staff. Had to do and did to continue to provide services. And I don't, I don't know how to how to acknowledge them enough. But they did fabulous and, you know, it's it's difficult to work. Knowing that, you know, you could get sick or somebody else could get sick. It's difficult to transition back and forth between phases. We went in one phase, out back in. That is really, really challenging and just. The 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 year in review was excellent, but remember that everybody lived through that. And adjusted and did a strategic plan and did things in the library and negotiated. Like a phenomenally complicated. Economic development agreement that is like an incredible game changer for this community that will be felt for years to come. So I I cannot say enough about our staff and about everybody and how hard they worked. How well they did under pressure, how they were able to pivot back and forth and and all of you too, right? Because all of the sudden we said, hey, by the way, we're all going to learn a new software program. And you're going to zoom in and you're going to zoom out. You're going to be on mute, not on mute. And, you know, all of all of these challenges that we all went through together. And I want to thank everybody for being so supportive, so supportive of staff. Supportive of each other, supportive of the the community as a whole. You know, not every every community, I can tell you that, not every community. Try to take care of the people that live in their city the way that we did. And and continue to provide the services. So I, I'm just really grateful. I'm very proud to be the mayor. And I'm really proud of our employees and all of you. So I am hoping that someday. We can all have a party. And because every every staff person deserves it. If I could, you know, give them all bonuses, you know. We would, because a lot of people in the private sector are getting bonuses. That's not something that we do in the public sector. All we can do is say that we appreciate all of the work and acknowledge that. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So. Let's move on to discussion and possible action on two thousand and twenty budget to actual amounts. I know there was a last minute memo sent out. I'm not sure if everybody. Got that memo from Dan and was able to read it, but that's there. So I'm just gonna hand it over to. Al or Dan, whoever's going to go next.
Yeah, go for it, Dan. I mean, you put together the vast majority of the materials and then, you know, obviously there's pieces in there related to public works, pieces in there related to the library. But so it's probably a group discussion, but. Might make sense that Dan kicks it off.
So we plan on trying to make this interactive. We didn't anticipate that half our group weren't able to see the interactive part. But the memo that I sent about twenty minutes before the meeting or the updated one just did not include. In that first box where it says not included in the original twenty twenty one budget. We pulled out the small motor or small mower, the plate compactor. And the truck box replacement. Everything else was the same. So. What we were trying to do in conversations with Mark and Howie is incorporate some of the stuff from the capital improvement plan. And other known necessities of things that might make more sense to replace. With this extra funding source. And. We came came up with a list and it includes things that. Are greater than the amount available based on past decisions. But we thought we would start with that, and if people just buy. And no means is this a comprehensive list. This is just the list that Howie, myself and Mark came up with. And I don't know Howie or Mark want to add anything. Before we kind of open it up for discussion and and if folks want, I can pull up a spreadsheet that has all these things listed. So we can make a list of things that we might want to include or not include on any kind of motion.
Dan, are you just talking about the first, the very first box? And and could you repeat what you said about the? I thought you said that you had already taken care of some things here and you pulled some stuff out, small mower. The plate for the compactor and the truck box.
Yep, those are, that was the only change from what was posted on the website to what I sent out at like five thirty. There were no other changes.
All right. And so these are additions to, correct? Or are you already taking them?
Yeah, so like the memo states, the twenty twenty revenue exceeded expenses by about three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. And I left a buffer of twenty thousand. And then some previously approved allocations that happened in February were. The fifty percent cost of the ambulance and then the engine replacement in the bucket truck a couple of weeks ago. So that left about a hundred and seventy six thousand that could be allocated towards other initiatives or projects.
Okay, thank you.
We got a list, I think, just north of two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of the things.
Do we have a policy? Of how we should spend? If we have. Residual funds to spend, what is our policy on that? Do we have a spending policy?
The the old fund balance policy that hasn't been looked at for several years that I'd like to look at later this year. States it should be used for one time capital items or debt service reduction.
And when was that created?
Probably ten or twelve years ago. And that's for any, anything that's above the recommended amount of fund balance policy. Of unassigned fund balance. And as I wrote in the memo, we have. We have a very healthy reserve there. So in my opinion, there's no need to add to it when there's. As we talked about last week or two weeks ago, in the capital improvement plan, there's millions of dollars of. Equipment and and road improvements that could happen.
And do we have a policy that states? What we can spend? Our fund balance for, like, we have a healthy fund balance, but do we have a policy that specifically talks about? When we would dip into that fund balance?
I would have to look at that policy and dust probably some of the cobwebs. But typically you would only tap that unassigned fund balance. That's truly like that rainy day emergency fund. For emergency situations.
And do we, do we have a a policy that indicates what would be an emergency situation?
Not to my knowledge.
Not that I'm aware. Yeah, again, it would be for one time spending, typically for one time expenditures. You know, in the event that. There's some catastrophic event that nobody can foresee even beyond, you know, a pandemic in which there is. You know. Damage to properties or buildings are destroyed. Or, you know, for some reason, if we, God forbid, you know, lose a, you know, a chunk of staff. You know, fund balance could be utilized for that, but, you know, it would be. Those are, those are really serious decisions. That we would need to evaluate kind of on a case by case basis, but I don't think the policy outlines what it is. Think the policy just provides, we should have twenty five percent.
And what do we have now?
Thirty.
Or about thirty.
It seems to me we've always just used it to. Do it to look at exactly what we're looking at at the end of the year, things that we didn't actually get incorporated. Like the five system.
That's typically what, in the six years that Al and I have been here, that's typically what we've done. We've tried to stick to. One time things that don't create a ongoing expenditure.
Do you have a screen that you can share, Dan, that shows what we've actually budgeted in two thousand and twenty one for some of these items? Like road maintenance?
Yeah, I can pull up the capital list from the twenty twenty one budget. All right, let's see here. Can everyone see that spreadsheet? Can everyone see this?
Yes, you can see it.
Okay. Okay.
And what areas are you planning on increasing what we've already budgeted?
So what what we tried to do, let me get the memo pulled up. We tried to touch a lot of different areas. We tried to include a little bit more for road, and these are all just, like I said. Mark, Howie and my thought process. Some newer used equipment for public works. Potentially setting aside money for future building repairs. Like we know the library eventually is gonna need a new roof and HVAC system at some point down the road. Possibly possibly preserving the sixty thousand that's currently in our sidewalk fund by. Allocating funds from this to preserve that sixty thousand dollars for future years when the picture might be different.
What do we usually run in that? What is our policy on the sidewalk fund? What do we usually want to have in there?
Right, we've been drawing it down over the years. In the last five, six years, I think we've drawn it down seventy grand, because now we. We used to put special assessments in there, but most of the special assessments that we have. Are for curb and gutter, which are picked up by the stormwater utility, so the special assessments go back to reimbursing the. The stormwater utility, so that fund hasn't really, doesn't really have a repunishing source, so essentially, once it's. At zero, it's probably not getting revived.
So what is our goal? Is our goal to, I mean, do we want to keep it? Or was our goal before, you said we'd been drawing it down, was that our goal to get it to zero or what was the intent of drawing it down?
It it was a, it was a fund that I inherited six years ago and. We've typically just used it for sidewalk repairs and the occasional new. Patch of sidewalk, I don't think the council's ever really set a goal per se on it. It's just been one of those things every year when we get down to the nitty gritty, it's, do we? Do we add that to the capital list or do we utilize the sidewalk fund? And typically, we just use utilize the sidewalk fund because the money's there.
So we don't have a policy on that we should refrain from drawing that down?
Nope.
Okay.
But we do have a sidewalk replacement plan. And that's, we've been moving along. Quite a bit with that plan, haven't we, Howie? I mean, I know that the twenty five hasn't gotten us very far, but.
Yeah, the the plan has been to use the twenty five thousand to fill in the gaps. So that eventually there could be where you could get to school, at least on one side of the street on a sidewalk. And the twenty five thousand also does some repairs, we do the shaving of the sidewalks. And you know, some minor repairs with it, but it also fills in those areas to get to a park. And it's, it's, you know, it's a smaller amount, but. But it's been coming out of the assessment amount just because of some of the other requirements and other tax years, so. So you could always use this money and not take out of the assessment fund. But I guess it's probably similar to the parks fund where if there was ever enough money to. Put in playgrounds and not use the parks fund, you could do the same thing. But there isn't anything that says you can't use the assessment fund whenever you want.
We we also, this is Larry, we also use it for fixing the handicap. Uh ramps, right, and that corners of streets and such, that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, we've used, yeah, we've used it for that, Larry, and a lot of times on those now, those corners.
Yeah.
Those have been included in the projects just because they're they're required, you know, to to fix those in the past when they weren't. Required, we were just doing those just, you know, just to make the city more accessible out of that twenty five thousand.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say this. The, for those of you that can't see the screen, the items that were included in the twenty twenty one budget were. Various pieces of equipment for the public works department, totally about sixty four thousand. The one and a half squad cars for seventy three thousand. A few landscaping and tree things for our public lands of seventeen thousand four hundred. And some street projects which the council approved to do Blanche Drive. Last or two weeks ago of approximately a hundred thousand, so that's the two hundred and fifty five thousand. That's part of the the capital budget.
I also still want to point out again, as noted, the. Potential for providing additional ten thousand dollars each for the gathering place. And the Milton House, which we had talked about before. And that this would be a one time unexpected expense during the pandemic. And the needs are warranted for additional support. That each of these two organizations has suffered significantly. Unexpected, unanticipated losses during this time. And we, I would ask all of you to consider this as part of this area.
So if we did that, would we? Would we take that out of some of the recommendations that we have right now?
So what I put on the screen, for those of you that can't see it, it's just a comprehensive list of all the items in the memo. And I and I have a placeholder for the Milton House and Gathering Place. Because I know we had never talked specifically about a dollar amount. And the idea here is to, if there's things that you'd like to see added. We can just copy them over to this items to add and it will tally us up so we can. Make sure we don't go over that hundred and seventy five, hundred and seventy six thousand mark. And it, and like I said earlier, that this list is not all inclusive, if there's other initiatives or plans that. You all haven't, that you didn't see on here and you want to add, that that is certainly your prerogative. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mark? Langer?
Do we not have any trash barrels in our downtowns?
Um, we, let's see, I mean, I'm not, we do have trash barrels down there, there was a request that we have more.
Who requested it?
Just the down, a couple of downtown businesses, just that we have a few more, you know.
Eight thousand dollars more?
If you get the nice, large ones that don't get, we had one that just, you know, disappeared. Someone actually stole one of them a few years ago and we've had the other ones ran into with cars tipped over. So if they're not the nicer heavy ones. We have troubles with with those similar to the flower barrels, so. So that that is why, these are, these are, you know, nice decorative ones, but it would, you know, just. You know, that that's the only reason, we have trash barrels down there now, they just asked if we could have more, so.
So are we gonna have trashy, some trashy trash barrels and then some Manhattan trash barrels or what are we gonna, what does that look like?
They're they're the nicer concrete looking ones with the, you know, the decorative ones with the stone on the outside, so.
But the eight thousand dollars is to buy more of what we have.
Buy more of what we have, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Do we have any data on how many trash barrels we should have in a downtown based on consumer use and the amount of trash that's in them?
They're usually, they're dumped by Johns and then in the summer. We had someone dump them Saturdays and Sundays mornings to clean up the downtowns in front of the, front of the bars. Because of the bottles and stuff that were in the parking lot, so they get dumped three times a week. And they're pretty much full every Thursday or Friday night, so.
So with that, so are we paying overtime to empty trash barrels on the weekends?
No, we have a seasonal employee does.
Okay, so are you thinking that we'll empty less because we have more?
No.
So it'll be extra work?
They'll, they'll probably be just as full, I think people just use them, so.
Okay.
Yeah. There there, it's like, I guess it's similar to like if there's. One in front of Walmart, it's easy just to use it, you know, if you have something in your car, so. So it won't be any less work, you know.
Okay.
And we've had a lot of people do some work in our downtown too, and they've put a lot of money into it, especially over, well, all over. Both downtowns. Yes, I think the the MAC groups have have worked hard during the latter half of. Last summer to to try to clean up the areas and. If they continue with that effort, these would be a nice addition to that.
I, this is Larry, I'd like, I'd offer that we could forego the chain link fence. I know what the purpose of it is, I'm I'm pretty sure, it's to keep people from wandering in and out of the cemetery and whatnot. But I proposed something a while back and and then again a while before that. To look at that cemetery from a historical perspective. And to be honest with you, I think chain link fence doesn't look very good around a historic cemetery itself. I mean, that would free up thirty eight thousand dollars. We could still do that if we decide to in the future. I I'm not sure a fence, I I guess I don't know if, maybe I'm missing the purpose of the fence, but.
Okay, um, the the fence, Larry, was was either the south side or also to do some decorative in the front.
Okay, then that's cool, I thought we were just putting up another chain link fence.
It was to check on price on doing some repairs in the front.
Yeah.
And the south side fence would eventually be to do a property separation.
Gotcha.
And, so, you know, the south side one's never had a fence.
Yeah.
It hasn't really needed it except for a couple of incidents last summer that got taken care of, so.
The front is very important, if that's part of that fund.
I mean, if, if there was, if if there was a, I guess, a reduction, that would probably. Maybe just to reduce that one and see what we could do if ones are left, you know, for the front.
How much did, oh, I'm sorry, Larry, are you, did you have something else?
I apologize, I thought it was just for the side fence, my mistake, so, thank you.
I have a question, how much did we collect in with the registration fees last year? Or do we plan on collecting in two thousand and twenty one, I guess, is my question?
Exactly, the real tax?
Yeah.
Let me.
It's like a hundred and forty four thousand.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna pull it up. It's somewhere in that mid one forty.
And what do we have budgeted in addition to that for roads? In two thousand and twenty one?
We had the hundred thousand for Blanche Street was included in. Above and beyond the wheel tax money.
So just Blanche Street or what is totally a budgeted that we're adding fifty thousand to?
That's the most efficient kind of maintenance, that's that. You know, still, still extending the life of the roadways to hopefully. Push off the larger costs, you know, Blanche Drive is a hundred thousand dollars, for forty thousand dollars, we're gonna touch miles, you know, a mile of street versus, you know, six hundred feet. The equipment, I had to step away for a second, but the equipment discussion too. The mower, the replacement of a mower with a newer used mower, we'd be looking at a more, replacing a mower that's twenty years old. That would be done, again, with a new used mower, we wouldn't be looking at a brand new, we had a capital plan. Over a hundred thousand dollars, it sounds like the number maybe closer to two hundred thousand dollars to replace a mower with a new, a brand new, a brand new mower. For forty thousand, we may, we may be able to get into a few year old mower with. You know, instead of the more we have the seven thousand hours, maybe we get down to one with a thousand hours and get a lot of years out of it again. Those are the discussions, you know, on that equipment and the roadway pieces. And I guess the sidewalk discussion too, I would just add, I think the simplest way to look at the existing sidewalk fund is that it's used to fund sidewalk. But it's not being replenished at the rate that it's being used for the last several years, so when we've had the opportunity to fund sidewalk with other means, we've been trying to do that to preserve the sidewalk fund. For those years where there would not be extra fund dollars in the general fund to do sidewalk maintenance and improvement.
And Larry, the the chain link fence, it says south side of the cemetery, that fence was actually for a. To replace the entire front with a decorative iron and stone type of fence. The south side, just a chain link fence, wasn't included, that would be because of the length of that south side, that would be a separate twenty eight thousand that. That we didn't put in here, so this this fence on top is for replacing the entire front fence.
And I'm hoping that I can get a fundraising campaign to supplement that, but we don't know that at this time, so. You know, some of that, so.
So do we have anywhere in our public parking where somebody can plug in and charge an electric car?
We don't.
I think that's something that we should look into at some point. Especially since we have this extra. Funding, that might be something that we could explore, you know, I. I think we told the Milton House and the Gathering Place that. We would relook at our budget this year. And I think we kind of inferred that if we had extra money that we would do something for them. We may have even outright said that, I don't even know if there was any inferring about it, so. And I do think we need to update the camera system around City Hall and PD.
I have a question about that camera system, or is, are, is this the security system around City Hall? Or is this the electronic equipment that we use for our meetings?
Um.
Security system around City Hall.
But does, does this include the FOB system update as well?
No, those are separate line items.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see it there, okay, never mind.
The camera system around City Hall, there there are already several cameras over on the PD side. And those cameras are are old, I think they might have been moved from the old police station and several of them are failing. So this was something that Detective Justice asked about, geez, probably early twenty twenty, maybe even twenty nineteen. And so we had Ingetech come in and take a look around and and talked about, well, okay, if you're here and you're doing this. There probably should be cameras in other places on the building as well, like on the drop box, for example, with, especially with the sensitivity around absentee voting. And perhaps there should be, you know, one at least at the back door where the where the vast majority of staff comes and goes. You know, oftentimes at night, so that's, that updating the camera system around City Hall and PD is. Replacing existing and potentially adding some additional in order to create an environment that's, you know, probably more. Indicative of the, unfortunately, where we are in twenty twenty one.
Yeah, and I wanted. I wanted cameras in the lobby of City Hall too, we don't have any cameras in the lobby.
We do not.
Uh huh. Um, so. Yeah.
Just, just as an aside. It also came up last night at the library board meeting that. They also do not have cameras outside and as we start to move forward with a. Story Garden outside, that they may need to look into having. Outside cameras there as well.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that's a good, good point, Theresa, and I, you know, I think Dan had mentioned it earlier in the presentation that, you know, this list is not. By any means all inclusive, in fact, the list could probably be infinite, you know, if we asked a hundred people to create a list, we'd probably get a hundred different lists. But Story Gardens is certainly a project that we've shown. Um, but Story Gardens is certainly a project that we've shown um commitment to, we've invested funds in. You know, and is that something that we want on the list? Uh, you know, that would be another potential uh consideration, so.
I would, I would really be in favor of Storybook Gardens because. You know, our community did not have access to the library. And fully access. I mean, they had a lot of access and the library did a great job. And it's not anybody's fault that patrons could not come in um for a good share of the year. But this might be a nice thing. Um, you know, I had a phone call from somebody that said, you know, my, I'm paying my taxes to use a library that I'm not getting full use of. And uh. This would be a nice gesture that would be very visible and appreciate appreciative of the community. Um, I think we do have an obligation when we have extra funds to do some projects that are very visible. To that community and. Not that I'm against road repair or sidewalk funds, like I am not. Uh, I want money in the sidewalk fund and I want us to stop draining the sidewalk fund. Um, so, but I do think we can give back to the community.
I have a question.
Right.
Yeah, I'm. Did the town make a decision about the other half the ambulance? Because. If they decide they didn't want to go down the route path, route path of the ambulance, then that kind of frees up more to be able to cover some of these things that we're looking at. So I'm just wondering if they made a final determination or not, or not. And.
It was no. It was a no.
So they aren't pu- putting forth money for a half of an ambulance, does that really need to be set aside anymore?
I would think that we should set aside. A good portion of that. Uh, for sure, um, does it have to be all, uh, our whole half? I don't think it does necessarily, but I think we should set aside as much of it as we can.
Yeah.
I I just would just like wait on that just a bit. Not saying that we couldn't use like twenty thousand of it to go to the Milton House and Gathering Place. I'm just saying like, let's, let's not just.
Like, I, speaking of Milton House and Gathering Place, I'm in favor of helping them, but I don't believe we agreed on an amount with them. So uh, I I think, you know, ten thousand is a lot. Uh, and it just depending on how we come out here. Um, I we, I know we put the Story Gardens and thank you, Dan, for doing that. Story Gardens camera system, but then probably item number twelve should also have slash library. Unless you're considering that part of the above one. But we should have a couple of cameras at the library.
So the the library does have cameras internally and Ashley can speak more to this. It's just. Trying to get a camera that's facing outside of the building as well, just as more and more programs occur at that location.
Exactly. That's my concern.
And in terms of Story Garden, some of the projects that we're looking to try and complete pending funding for twenty twenty one are. The perimeter walkway around the Story Gardens area that will open the space up for us to. Continually add different elements to the space as funding is available. Um, in the fall, we're looking at constructing the outdoor programming space. Hopefully, the. Um, high school students will be able to build that for us. We have a meeting set up with Scott Randall next week. Um, funding for that, for the construction piece is coming from um a, the foundation, right, Ashley?
Yes, the Library Foundation.
But we will need funding for the um, the base of it, that the concrete pad that it's going to go on. So there are certain elements that, you know, if if the council is willing to designate some of these funds toward that project, we would be very grateful. Otherwise, we're going to be working on fundraising.
I think that that would be a very nice gesture to put some of this funding towards. That project, which I was thinking that that's what we are doing in addition to the the camera system.
You know, and I I can't say it was before my time, um, but you know, there is a precedent in that, you know, much of the splash pad. Was funded from. Access funds, if you want to call it that, that came about during that budget year. That was because of an assessment. Issue that took place. I think at the state level, but. You know, it's it's um. It's something that, you know, the community has done in the past and. Certainly, the splash pad is a. Big item in the city.
So are you thinking that maybe we should do ten thousand to Story Gardens Gathering Place? And Milton House? Because I would be willing to, I would be willing to put that much for each entity. Um, uh, especially the Gathering Place and the Milton House because they. Incredible year. They've got their utilities are out of this world. Um, and then the trash barrels. So how how do you want us to do this, Mayor? Would you like us to just vote on one thing at a time? Cause I I'm not looking at the screen.
Well, I mean, is there a sense of urgency right now or do you want staff to come back with? Um. Some proposals that include uh Milton House Gathering Place, Storybook Gardens and. Maybe, you know, a little bit of money from the ambulance that we're not buying or. Do you want to try and do something without seeing it? I I don't know that there's a sense of urgency in any of these things. At this moment, but I'm absolutely willing to be wrong about that.
I would like to see, I would like to see uh some kind of an estimate on the camera system. I think that that's. Very important that we get that addressed.
Yeah, and that's, that would be easy to come up with. I think we just have to circle back with big attack. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe one approach in this would be totally up to to the council. Um, would one or two council members like to, you know, sit down with us? And and go over this list. Um, and and many of the things that we discussed tonight, would that be helpful or? Or would you like it to be a staff kind of driven practice? You know, I I I don't, I I'm open to whatever. I'm just trying to think of a way to. Uh, to y- you know, kind of gain buy-in along the way. Um, so it's not, it's so it's not like everybody's kind of um shooting darts next time we get to the council meeting. Just, just, I guess, kind of just thinking out loud.
Well, and what we've got to figure out is what actually are we gonna kind of reduce on this list to some extent? Because this list is way more than what we actually have available, if we are still setting aside money for the ambulance. So if you took the ambulance out of the equation, like completely admitted, we actually would be able to fund literally all this.
Correct.
So that's why I was asking about the ambulance portion. And I don't disagree that we should maybe set aside some for that, but just if we eliminate the ambulance, you literally could pay for everything on this list, probably.
I don't think. I don't think I'm comfortable eliminating the ambulance. Um, we're still talking about that.
And I'm just, you know, I was just throwing out there as an example, but ultimately, we're gonna have to decide stuff that we're gonna need to get cut, not so much what stuff we want to add to this list. It's gonna be more about what do we want to cut from this list, not add.
Right.
The more we add, the more we have to cut.
I, I have another thought, Al. I do love what you recommended about council people being represented. On the discussion. It's not a trust factor of of staff, by the way, or employees.
Oh, no, no, I I I certainly, yeah, we we've got great rapport with everybody. I I just was trying to think of a way to.
Yeah.
Maybe, so so again, it's not, you know, there's some, there's some folks who ultimately are making the decision. Would be involved in kind of the discussion that creates the list, so. Again, not to say like, once it comes forward, everybody's like, oh, this is perfect, but you know, there's some folks that kind of have a little bit more of that. What went in, what went in to even create this list?
Well, what if, what if we did this instead? The that staff would go back with our input. Put together a proposal staying within the fiscal um limit that we have before us. And then sending it out to all the council people for an initial reaction. Sort of a a a vote, if you will, a doodle, a doodle voter, whatever you want to do with it.
Hey, we can't be doing any voting.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Not voting, but 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 that we could look at it.
That you could get feedback?
Yeah, thank you. That's what I meant.
Well, I think if we're gonna do that, Larry, though, we need to have some, give them some guidance on what to start cutting stuff from, though. We've only given my, I got into what to add to it again. So I think we, if we're gonna have them go that route. And have the staff put together something, then we need to give them some areas that we might want to think about having them produce.
Well, I already did. I I'm still advocating uh maybe five thousand to the Milton House and Gathering Place, so.
But that's, you know, already, this is two hundred and thirty five thousand out of a hundred and seventy thousand, I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, but. You still have sixty thousand to cut and cut in five thousand for things that even aren't even on this yet.
Well.
It doesn't help. You gotta cut something more, most of the road maintenance and you cut more and stuff like that.
But I I still think it has to come from staff because I, I don't, as a council person, I don't know enough about mowers. I don't know enough about, you know, uh, camera systems. I I don't claim to be an expert on those things, so. Uh, if push came to shove, if you were asking me tonight what to cut. And even though it's a, it's an important project to me, and I think it's important to the community, I would drop the thirty eight thousand dollars. Uh, for the cemetery project for this, for this year. And allow me and others to get a fundraising campaign together to make that happen. Down the road. That's what I would do. And that would bring us down to two hundred thousand. Which then we can go from there. But that's my opinion. I'm just offering my opinion. I mean, I want to see that done because I think it'll be a value to the community. But I'd rather have a good mower under our staff or cameras around safely where we need them or. Uh, sewer, you know, any kind of a maintenance of roads. Those are all things that the people are gonna look at. They're gonna complain more about not fixing the roads. Then they will complain about not having that decorative fence by the cemetery, I'm sure.
I think that I would have to agree with you on that one, Larry. I was kind of wondering, is there. Does the F O B system and the cameras work? Is that something that can be done together? Because I know that we need to be working, I know the F O B system. Needs to be changed. I think that, I know that we've talked about that last year.
I don't know that that I'm an expert in this, but there. There are going to be some things that will need to be, you know, wires and conduit and things that will need to go to the same places. And so perhaps some labor time will be saved because they're doing all of that at the same time. Um, but I'm not an expert in the field either.
Yeah, and the quote that we have for the cameras and the F O B system is from the same entity. Um, so as Scott said, there's probably some economies of scale that would exist there, especially on the back end of it. Um, so could they be done done together? Um, yes, um, but they don't need to be. I think i- is maybe that's, maybe that's a different way to answer your question and. From a different way that you phrased it. They don't need to be done together, but they, but they could be done together. Uh, but I don't know that it would reduce the cost if we did it together beyond what we've already been quoted. Because I'm assuming that economies of scale is already built into the quote that we received because it came from the same entity.
Okay, if I could suggest, why don't you just have uh Al, Anissa and Dan kind of coordinate it? And then when you need uh information, you can call in like Scott for the information regarding cameras. What what does he need? Uh, what kind of uh, what level of information or how many cameras does he need and so forth? When you need information from Howie, what does he need for for uh mowers and so forth? What does he absolutely have to have? And when you need information from any older person. Call them in, but ultimately come back next time with a a suggested list.
Yeah, I think we absolutely could do that. I think, you know, certainly with Mark's um capital improvement program too, we can. You know, we can look at.
Yes.
That, I think that that's, I I think that that approach, I, if if the council's comfortable with that approach, we can certainly. You know, this was kind of a big list uh based on kind of the holistic thought. But if if you're looking for a recommendation for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we can, we can do that too. And include the items that were were brought up tonight by the council. I think that that's a a very reasonable approach, so long as everybody's comfortable with that. I don't want to speak on behalf of the folks who ultimately make the decision.
I I am comfortable. The only thing I ask is that we would take down that terribly rusted. Uh, fence that's running along the cemetery now in the front. I I'd really ask that we remove that at least.
I think if we do that, we do have to put something else up to protect the s- the headstones. And to protect the cemetery, I I don't know, like I, if I had someone that was buried in the front row and a car came flying through there. I think I might feel a little bit hurt about the city that's putting up a fence. I don't know, I'm not in the cemetery business, so.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would disagree because that fence will not stop a car. It's, it's not going to stop a car from going through. Um, it's just, I think it's, it's just unsightly.
No, I'm not saying about taking down the other one. I'm saying put something up.
Well, I. Well, I'm just, that would help a lot. That's just my opinion.
And then I guess the only other thing since um there's been discussion about um. Because obviously we want the 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 list to balance. Is there a preference for a dollar amount that you want us to use as a placeholder for the Gathering Place and Milton House? Because obviously twenty grand, ten each is gonna be different than five grand for each.
Right. Re- review with the council what they budgeted for?
They budgeted ten thousand dollars for each entity.
Okay, that's right.
Um, the Milton requested twenty. And I believe, and we can double check this, that the Gathering Place requested fifteen.
Yeah, and we said, we said tw- uh, ten each is funny.
Yeah, and then and and the discussion, yeah, the discussion that took place after that was. Let's revisit this once twenty twenty's wrapped up. I don't, I don't think that there was, I I agree with whoever made the comment. I don't think there was a dollar amount. That I know there wasn't a dollar amount settled upon. Perhaps there was a dollar amount discussed. Uh, but I I agree with Dan, since that really is kind of a council decision, it'd be helpful to have some guidance on that, so at least we're. Um, not coming back with something then then and then having to shake it all up again on the sixteenth. And then, and likewise with Story, with Story Gardens, if there is a desire from the majority of the council to have some dollars allocated to Story Gardens. What would the council feel is a reasonable amount? Those would be the two things that I think would be hardest for us as staff to to come up with. Uh, but would have, uh, you know, an impact on the bottom line.
So does somebody want to make a motion about that?
I think that'd be a good idea. Yeah, that would be helpful, too.
I'll make a motion that we give the Gathering Place and the Milton House ten thousand each. And then Story Gardens, five thousand.
We. We make them separate motions, please. Separating the Gathering Place and uh, I'm just asking. Separating the Gathering Place and the, in the, in the um. Milton House as one motion, and then another motion on the Story Gardens.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion. Well, I'll just make a motion. That we give the Gathering Place and the Milton House each ten thousand dollars. Out of our excessive, our um.
Presumably funds.
Okay, that sounds good. If I had make separate motions, though, I have to wait until this.
Mark is raising his hand, so I don't know what you guys are doing.
I'll second Linda's first motion.
Mark has um something to interject here that will be helpful.
What I want to make clear is I understand that the purpose of this motion is to. Insert those amounts into the proposed budget, not to approve those amounts to be allocated to those entities. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um.
So, um, Alder Person Clark motion to direct staff to insert into the proposed budget for twenty-twenty residual funds. Um, the gathering place and Milton House each ten thousand dol- ten thousand dollars. And that was a motion from Alder Clark and a second from Alder Rouge. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, there is a motion. There is a second. It's been reviewed by Mark S. and Inga Kushman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So that's five yeses and one no. Am I correct on that? Did I miss anybody? Okay, all right. And that was just so everybody is clear to just put in that figure. We are not, I mean, I just wanna be really clear, nobody committed to that money. And I don't want there to be any confusion tomorrow with the gathering place and the Milton House jumping up and down, thinking they just got ten, ten thousand extra dollars. Because that's not what we just did.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll make a motion to ask staff to add five thousand dollars for the Story Gardens.
To insert five thousand dollars as a placeholder in the proposed. Spending, um, okay.
And would that be for the cameras? Or Storybook Gardens? So this would just be for, for the construction of the Storybook Gardens facility?
Correct.
Cameras at the library would be a separate issue then.
Well. Yeah, because I'm kinda hoping that those cameras can be incorporated into what we're gonna need at the City Hall and the Police Department. I'm thinking that a multiple purchase here.
Okay, so it's just for Storybook Gardens on the outside.
Um, and can I explain that motion? Is that okay? Because I can't see you. Um, the reason that I am only starting out with five thousand just for the Story Garden. Is because there is still a fundraising going on with that. And this is actually our very first donation from the city to Story Gardens. And I, I really, I really thought that we were trying to encourage the community to raise funds for this. So that's why I went with five.
So, um, just quick, we have a motion on the table. We need, we need a second in order to continue discussion.
Second. Take your clip.
Either way.
Okay. Is there any further discussion by anybody? All right then. Then we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Did I miss anyone? I have a unanimous. Okay, all right. And that's it, right? We can move off of number seven?
Yeah, so what we will do, just to kind of wrap up, from what I understand. Uh, we will go, staff will create a recommended list. That is based on the number, uh, based on the amount of funds that is residual from twenty-twenty, less the ambulance. But includes ten thousand for the gathering place, ten thousand for the Milton House and five thousand for Storybook Gardens' construction. That's my understanding.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they, I just wanna say publicly, the only reason I'm law, I'm, I'm agreeing with Ryan about removal or reducing the ambulance fund. Either way is fine. Uh, it's very disappointing to me that we are forced into that position. That's all I'm gonna say. Because I think that ambulance was critical. I just wanna go on record about that.
Thanks, Larry. I'm gonna move off of item seven if we're good to go. All right, and thank you everyone for having a very thoughtful discussion about everything. I really appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's ideas and perspectives and it's good to have differing thoughts and opinions. And, um, well, we'll revisit this. So item number eight. Discussion and possible action regarding the forgiveness on the loan library advance from the general fund. And the only question I have on this is what percentage does it take us down to?
So like the memo states, this, uh, this does not affect the unassigned fund balance. So that keeps us at that thirty percent number that we talked about earlier. Because, because this money had left the city coffers and it was sitting out there as a receivable. It is part of the non-spendable fund balance. So it'll just, it'll reduce the city's overall fund balance, but we only focus in on the unassigned. Because that is the dollars that are available for. That's actually available to spend. Non-spendable is non-spendable. And since it's receivable, would probably dangle out for a long period of time. I also don't think it's appropriate to, um, inflate our balance sheet of the city. By a hundred and eight thousand dollars with no known period of time of when this would actually be repaid. Does that help answer your question, Anisa?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. That it wasn't, um, going to. Impact any spending or anything they discussed before or impact what we have in our general fund and. That what is, one question I do have, what's, what is a twenty thousand dollar buffer?
Oh, in the previous?
Yeah.
That's, that's just a buffer in case there were other little invoices that trickled in, in the.
Okay.
Uh, just my comments, this is Teresa. I believe that the, uh, library committees. And the fundraising committees and, well, Bill Wilson, who had worked very hard, uh, on the fundraising projects. Over the year, uh, the year in which they were raising several thousand dollars, hundred thousand dollars. Uh, several hundred thousand dollars to raise money in the building project. Uh, work should be commended for their efforts. And, uh, forgiving this fund is really something that we should consider doing. And in that, uh, effort, I would like to move to forgive the remaining one hundred eight thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. In advance to the library fund.
I'll second that.
Any further questions or discussion on this? Teresa, anything more?
No.
Linda?
You're on mute.
Okay, sorry, I lost you all.
So Linda, did you hear that we're at, that, uh, there's a motion and a second on the library fund forgiveness?
Oh, okay. No, I didn't. But I'm ready.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I guess the only thing, um, the only thing that I would, would point out, as Dan did in his memo. Uh, that about two-thirds of the library, uh, project was paid for, uh, with private funds. Um, and in fact, the, um, the library raised more than we initially indicated we were going to raise. Uh, the issue was that, uh, at the time, things were bid, uh, bids were, uh, higher than anticipated. Uh, and in fact, there were a few things that, uh, were paid for that. You know, we probably could have come back to the city and said, now that probably fits into, uh, a maintenance mode. Um, there were, uh, essentially some repairs that were made to, uh, some of the rooftop equipment that, uh, fell into that category. So, um, I think the library certainly appreciates this effort. Uh, the, uh, intent from the start was, uh, to, um, uh, to make it a, a share and roughly a share of. Two-thirds private dollars and one-third public dollars and it, uh, it worked out pretty close to that. Um, the library could not have moved forward with getting the project done had it not been for the city's, uh, terrific cooperation. Um, and, uh, I repeatedly have talked to folks in some other communities, uh, who essentially say, you know. How did you manage to do that? Uh, and, um, you know, my answer really has been, um, you know, Dan was masterful in terms of, uh, the cash flow. Uh, and where dollars could come from, uh, as the need existed. Uh, so that we didn't have to forego, uh, opening the library with a whole lot of old chairs in it. Uh, you know, so that we could, uh, you know, have the, uh, the full equipment and, and to have things, uh, ready. Uh, for the, uh, the, the grand opening. So I think a great, great, uh, effort in terms of cooperation. And, uh, this is kind of the final step of terrific cooperation on the part of the city of Milton with the, uh, uh, the library.
Thanks. Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
Brian? Larry?
Well, we have a beautiful jewel in our community. And I think it's good to support.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Did I miss anyone? It looks like it's unanimous. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding a land acquisition along Elm Street in relation to the lift station six replacement and possible relocation project. Is this Mark E. or Howie L.?
Yeah, we can let, we can, we can let Mark take this one. He's been the guy behind all the conversations and engineering.
So the station six is on Elm Street. It's located in the terrace. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that site or that location, but. Um, that list station is scheduled for replacement as part of the capital improvement plan. It's been an item that we've known of that needs to be replaced for several years, based on age, condition, um, operations, maintenance. Currently, the location is a challenge for relocating or for re- uh, replacing the list station. Uh, not that it couldn't be done, but it's not an ideal site for several reasons. One, the location between the terraces or in the terrace between the sidewalk and the curb is very narrow. It doesn't provide any off-site location for staff to work, uh, to perform operation maintenance. Um, they are working within the street or from the street to do their work. Um, there is no site for a, um, an onsite back generator or, or, or. Not, not, not a lot of room for a backup generator. It may be possible, we may need some easements from the property owner on the east side of the road. And relocating or adjusting the sidewalk and, and other items. Construction would probably also be a little more costly. Um, so as part of the planning process, we looked for a site that we could use to relocate the station. Um, and try to keep it in a similar location because if we have to do a, a move of a, a, a large distance from where it is, we'd have to reroute a lot of gravity sewer. Or force main installation, which would also have cost to the project. Um, there's a center, a gravity sewer main that runs from Vincent Street to Elm Street, uh, through a private easement. Um, just west of Elm Street and that property also includes an existing stormwater base that. A lot of that area drains too. We had some discussions with the property owner about that site and our project and, uh, the property owner. Um, expressed some willingness to sell that property to the city. Um, so what we did, we had a sur- a survey done to determine what the boundary would be. Because it includes part one, one lot and part of an additional lot that this property owner owns. The, um, class survey was then provided to an appraisal company to try to determine fair market value. The appraisal came back at, um. Eighteen thousand dollars. Um, prior to this, the homeowner had indicated he'd like, uh, he'd consider selling the land for, for thirty thousand. And he had mentioned that he felt this was based on the tax assessment. Uh, did a look at, took a look at the tax assessment and when I combined the values of the land based on the platte survey. Uh, it comes out just shy of thirty-five thousand dollars. So really it's up to, uh, the council to decide, one, if we wanna relocate the lift station and if we do, um, the site would work. And then it's so, um, if we, if, if we wanna try to purchase this land for how much.
Okay. Uh, Bill Wilson, questions, comments?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions, thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Uh, Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
Um, yeah, did I see that this is also zoned conservancy?
Yes, a portion of the property is, yes.
Is that gonna interfere with a lift station in the location?
No, lift station, the vast majority of the, of the construction that takes place with the lift, lift station is below ground. What sticks up above the ground is really just a concrete pad and a pedestal.
So there'll be, there'll be a generator and, you know, the electric pedestal. It'll look similar to what it was in front of City Hall.
Yeah. Most people wouldn't even know it was there, uh, so it would.
This conservancy, I don't believe is where the lift station would be located because conservancy is not right up to the roadway.
Correct. Yeah, if you're familiar with the area there, there's a, there's a deep depression, like a kettle. And that's the area that's zoned conservancy and this would be outside of the conservancy area.
Brian, do you have any questions or comments? I don't think I.
Nope, not really. Nope.
Okay.
So I think the question for the council is. Do we, excuse me, are you comfortable, um, you know, with his, with his request of thirty thousand dollars? Um, you know, I think, I think some of us are, some of us aren't. But, uh, you know, based on what we believe, I guess, I guess you could make the argument, what we believe as the city, uh, based on his assessment. Uh, to be the value thirty thousand dollars is, is pretty much right in line. And, uh. You know, it saves us a lot of headache and heartache and potential costs. If we have to reconstruct the lift station in its existing location, it probably would be more costly. So.
I also think it would be a safety issue. I, I worry about working in the streets.
Yeah.
You don't have to be when there's repairs or maintenance being done.
So do you want, uh, a motion to relocate the lift station? And then a different motion to purchase the land or Mark, what are you thinking of?
I, I think just the way it stated, approve, uh, execution of the offer to purchase of property along Elm Street for the station six relocation for the amount of, and fill in the blank. So if we're gonna.
Thirty thousand, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Devin? Okay, so Inga, could you reread the motion?
Yep, um, Alder Person Clark, motion to approve the execution of an offer to purchase property along Elm Street for the lift station six relocation. In the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, and there was a second. And does anybody have any further questions or comments about this from the council?
I, I do, just to.
Okay, Larry?
Just a clarification, I, um, this, the funding for this then would come out of the utility fund, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And it was actually budgeted for previously as well.
Yeah. It was, it was a budgeted acquisition within the utility fund, yep. We actually budgeted forty thousand dollars for it, honestly.
Oh, so there's ten thousand dollars floating around there. Any other questions?
Utility fund, so.
In the utility fund.
Yeah, that one's a little bit different. That just means the rates. That one's a little bit different. That just means the rates stay stay the same for longer.
Good, good. That is a good thing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Did I miss anybody? Okay, that was unanimous. All right, discussion. And possible action regarding two thousand twenty one farmland leases.
Well, this is an item that appears annual on our agendas. These are the farmland leases for the property that the city owns that is available for development that has yet to develop or does not have plans for development in the near future. In years past, we have actually brought forth four leases and this year there is one less because the land that was previously leased by Mr. Brian Gunnick has been purchased by Clausen Quality Chocolates and will be under development this year. So the three parcels that remain have their farmland lease renewal letters that Inga's prepared. And we're ready to lease that land to those farmers for the twenty twenty one planting season.
Sorry, just to clarify, there are four
I'm sorry.
Or Three letters, but four leases.
You're right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
How would you like these motions done? Do we need to do one property at a time?
No, I don't believe, yeah, what we what we've done in years past is the council can approve the leases, the farmland leases as presented by staff in the in the agenda materials.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Bill? And Larry and Ryan. So there's a second. Is there any questions or comments, Devon? Brian?
No.
Larry?
No.
Bill?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Linda?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Did I miss anyone? All right, I have unanimously. We got farm land leased out now. Okay. Number eleven. This is like what we've all been waiting for and we all talk about all year long. And we have extra money now to make it really high quality.
Yes, H B. UHD four K quality, yeah.
Sell DVDs. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand and twenty one sanitary sewer televising bid award.
So this was just put out the bid and bids received February eighteenth for the twenty twenty one sewer televising. This is just a continuation of our annual televising program that we started several years ago as part of our C mom implementation. That's the capacity maintenance operation. Our capacity management, maintenance and operation manual. So the, let's see, there were five bits received. There was quite a range in the bits. Little bit was seventy seven forty nine, happy it was just under forty one thousand. We're looking to work the work to Green Bay Pipe and TV. They've done work in the city previously. Just nothing too out of the ordinary here.
And before, I guess, before folks vote, if there is any seriousness about increasing the quality of it, you know, now would be a time to do it because I can show you what it looks like in our sanitary sewer.
Is it a snake?
It's a salamander that Mark gave me this picture months ago, waiting, waiting for this moment to share with you. So, you know, this is what we see in the sewer televising. And if you really wanted to get a better look at Sally the Salamander, we could increase the quality, but it's not necessary.
But that's pretty good, just the way it is. You could
Yeah, you can check out the spots.
Just like, how big is that thing now? Like, this is probably where the Loch Ness monster started out. It's salamander in a sewer system.
It's a teenage mutant ninja salamander.
We're gonna have a Loch Ness monster at Stores Lake now.
I'm so sorry that Teresa wasn't able to see that. Teresa probably has no idea what's going on right now.
I know, unfortunately.
There's like an eight foot salamander.
No.
I'm also glad, I'm also glad that the courier and W C L O have no idea what's going on right now either.
I don't know. Keep your children inside. That's all.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt Mark and how we have been waiting for this moment for months.
Oh, my gosh, I can't even believe we don't have a framed picture of this yet.
Well.
There is video footage if you want to see it.
Well, I mean, and the courier does have like that photo contest. I don't know if the city is allowed to enter it, but you know.
We could name him Milti the Salamander. P R with it.
All right. So is there any questions regarding televising? Teresa?
No.
Linda?
No.
Larry?
I don't have any. I I maybe just a general question, Mark. Their quality difference isn't reflected necessarily in the bidding, correct? I mean, is that a fair statement on my part? The the quality of the equipment that each firm uses is probably pretty similar.
Yeah, similar. Some of it is limited by the specifications in the bid. They can only move the camera at certain speed. You know, a number of feet per minute or again, think. And what I would say too is this bidder and the next little bidder have worked in the city on several occasions and have provided good quality televising for us.
Thank you.
Brian?
Nope, nothing here.
Devon? Bill?
Nothing.
Did I miss anybody? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the, let me see, get back here. To do, I would move approval of the twenty twenty one sanitary sewer televising bid and awarded to was the low bidder?
Green Bay Pipe and TV.
Green Bay Pipe.
I'll second that.
Anything for anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, did I miss anyone? Nope. That's unanimous. All right, discussion and possible action regarding payments of land sale transaction fees related to Clausen Quality Chocolates.
These are real estate transaction fees in in relation to the sale of land for the Clausen Quality Chocolates. Typically, we would include these in a TIF development agreement, but that was an oversight this time around. But we've had a contract with Maguire Mirrors to be our commercial real estate agent to assist us in the marketing of lands available for sale in the city of Milton. Both, well, in 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 most cases, city owned land, but in this case, in in the sale of private land. They were kind of the real estate agent that worked on the city's behalf to, I guess, kind of negotiate that deal, for lack of a better term. So this would reflect the real estate transaction fees that would be owed to the real estate agent that was involved on the city's behalf. We've had a contract with them since before I came. I think so. I think it was like two thousand and fourteen. And we do renew it on an annual basis. Again, this one is a little bit different because it relates to lands that were sold to Clausen by a private entity. But it usually comes out of TIF development or usually comes out of TIF funds through the marketing and administration line. We paid Maguire Mirrors commissions on the sale of land for the SSI building and and for other city owned properties that we've had over the last couple of years. So this would be similar to that slight differentiation with the with the with the Clausen deal, but nonetheless, this would be part of that same process.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Larry, any questions or comments?
Um. Yeah, I do. In general, I would be, oh, first of all, let me say this. I'm not opposed to what's happened. Al and I have talked about this, so I'm being upfront about that. I, in general, I would be opposed from principle viewpoint in paying fees for transfer of property between private entities. So that's just my personal view on on real estate transactions in general done by community. So I'm, I don't want to delay this project. I don't want to look like I don't want close and in the community. It's more of a procedural thing. I just, maybe it's something we could revisit as we renew that contract to help with the with the Caldwell Bankers. So, but again, I'm just feeding my own.
Thanks, Larry. Devon, any questions or comments? Nope. Linda, any questions or comments?
I was just wondering, Al, is there, is there a benefit to dividing this up from between the two TIFs nine and eleven? Or is it better to just do it from one tip or the other?
It doesn't particularly matter. You know, TIF eleven is brand new and technically has no cash in it at this point. TIF nine does have cash, but if we were to spread it out, you know, spread the expenditure out, I mean, obviously, we'll we'll cut one check to the real estate agents, but if we were to spread it out over, you know, the two TIFs, you know, it it's kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other. But I wanted to let, you know, the reason for including both in there so the council is aware that it is a TIF expenditure. It's a TIF eligible expenditure in that it it would be paid for out of TIF. Whether it comes from TIF nine or TIF eleven or TIF six for that matter, doesn't really matter. Well, it can't come from TIF six at this time because TIF six expenditure periods could go out in there. So it doesn't really matter, but it but it would be an eligible expense in both of those TIFs, either of those TIFs.
Brian, any questions or comments?
No.
Bill, any questions or comments?
Only comment was splitting it between the two TIFs actually provides a little bit more flexibility. And and so it makes sense to me. Thank you.
So what is that motion? Someone make a motion.
I would be a motion to approve the payment of real estate commission fees related to the Clausen Quality Chocolates project. Caldwell Bankers in the amount not to exceed one thousand eight hundred and thirty two thousand two hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety cents from TIF nine and or TIF eleven.
So moved.
Is there a second? Brian, okay. A motion by Bill and seconded by Ryan. Is there any further questions or comments for anybody?
Um, I just wanted to add that I was not opposed to the commission related to the sale of the city land to a false. I think those fees are the responsibility of the city.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And is there anyone opposed?
Nay.
So I have five yeses and one no. Did I miss anybody? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. And thank you for all of your your comments and explanations. Okay. Discussion, direction and possible action regarding sidewalks, no removal procedure.
This was the discussion that kind of inspired out of the discussion at the two council meetings. And there was a request to put a discussion on on this agenda related to the snow removal ordinance. So what what we have included in in the packet is a number of items. The obviously the snow removal ordinance itself, as well as some analysis or as well as the resolution that was adopted in two thousand seventeen that set the fees. But also some analysis that was provided by the Public Works Department in relation to the letters that have been sent and the cost associated with those fees for the last couple of years. Excuse me, as well as a survey of neighboring cities, because I think that came up at one of the last, in one of the last council meetings or discussions too. You know, where do our fees, you know, where are they in terms of other communities? So that's what's in in the agenda packet. And, you know, I I agendized it as discussion, direction and possible action. So if there is some some direction that the council has in relation to either pieces of the process or pieces of the ordinance or pieces of the resolution, we can bring those back at the next meeting for adoption.
Can you share any of those documents?
I can share them all. Well, not at the same time, but so so this was, is there one specifically that you wanted to see? I'm sorry, I I was looking at them as I was pulling them up. This is
Can't pull them up. Larry, do you have a question?
No, no, I just grabbed my hand. Sorry.
Okay, Linda?
Yes, I I was just wondering. This is an incredible amount of information and I'm so glad that we have all this to look at. This is, this is one of our committee groups, though, that we have a working committee for public works. Even even beyond us taking a look at this tonight, I I I believe we should let the Public Works Commission take a look at this and see if they need any changes. They think we need to do anything to change it. Personally, and I probably should have said this last week or two weeks ago, I mean, I have watched children try to ride their bicycles to school on sidewalks that have not been shoveled, and it's not a pretty sight. But, you know, I'm the I'm the sidewalk lady and and we have a walkable community and and a lot of people are walking and a lot of people expect to have this done. And I I I, you know, we're in a situation, the young man that we spoke with two weeks ago was having a hard time financially. We we gave him a break. I think if we're gonna, at this point in time, if we're gonna make any changes, I would like to see this go to the Public Works Committee. Let the citizens look at this and see what they have to say.
Any other questions or comments by anybody?
You know, I I guess I don't have any objection to it going to that committee. I I if Howie doesn't, I I don't know how he feels. I also checked into neighboring committees. And most of them are similar. They, it does seem to rain across most communities and that the twenty four hour timeline, once the the snow stops to be the the key, the the problem is what happens after that twenty four hour limit? And it's it's the timeline after that of how those issues are addressed. And that's kind of what has to be looked at. How the problems are dealt with after that twenty four hours? And so yeah. I guess that needs to be discussed.
Larry, any questions or comments?
No, I'm I'm comfortable with the committee taking a look at it. And perhaps if any of us aldermen have thoughts, we could forward that to a committee, the committee, just as input.
Ryan?
I also think it's a good idea to send to committee to have them look at for first. Looking at what Al's got up here, I mean, we actually give people sixty hours, not twenty four.
Yeah.
We're mostly leaning of all these communities in this area.
And that's
As far as that goes.
The most common complaint we get is that it is too long.
Yeah. And but we also charge a high rein inspection fee when almost nobody else does, so.
Yeah, because most people don't have initial inspections. They they either just hang a notice on the door saying shovel your walk or they or they don't do anything. So we're actually giving people sixty day or sixty hours plus a rein inspection notice, which extends the whole process to, you know, probably four or five days five or six days longer than any community in and around us.
Right.
So I I guess the the question I would have is, is what after that sixty hours? should we be doing differently? Because I've heard everything ranging from we shouldn't be giving notices to begin with. It's people's responsibilities to take care of the property that they own. To we need to have, make sure that property owners designate a local entity to shovel their walk. That is a huge, there's a huge range between those two things. One is like no nonsense and one is a tremendous burden to place on the government, which I feel is not our responsibility whatsoever to track down out of, out of, out of city landlords, snow removal companies. That's.
And that's what all these communities do list, Al, is that if if the owner or the designated responsibility does not clear it within twenty-four hours, the city will do it and charge the owner.
Right, right. And that's what that's what we do too, but we just give them five days plus two notices.
Right.
No, this twenty-four hours and James will give them twelve hours.
Yeah.
That's it.
So so, yeah, I, yeah, so so, yeah, that that I think the way you just explained it there makes a lot of sense to me. And it would shorten the process, but I would also remind people of how we got here. In two thousand and seventeen, there was a property owner who claimed he had no notice. And we said, we sent him a letter and he said he never received it. So the council directed staff to send it registered in order to prove that it was received. So I just want to remind folks how we got here. And this is one of those cyclical things that every couple of years people want to look at and 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 revisit it. But, you know, again, I, it's not to say that any decision was done wrong. But the pendulum is swinging back very differently than it was just in two thousand seventeen. When the idea then was, we need to give notice, give notice again, and then make sure they absolutely received the notice before we did anything.
Well, that amount of time, a lot of people can bank on the snow melting sometimes.
Right, right.
Right, before they actually ever have to end. And I think if if we keep in mind, like, what is the goal? What is the goal of the ordinance in terms of safety is to have safe sidewalks? Is what we're doing increasing our safe sidewalks? Or not having enough impact or decreasing it?
I think giving it to the Public Works Committee, let them have a crack at it. See what they come up with, with, see what route they want to go, all the different directions you could go from here. And maybe they decide that it's good as it is, but I think give them a chance to have a say on it. And then it will come back for council either way. Gives us another chance to have a say at it.
Yep. Devon, any questions or comments? Devon? Oh, there he is.
No, I think it's a great idea. I'm going to look at it.
Bill, any questions or comments?
Oh, thinking about Public Works, good place for it.
Okay, is there a motion then?
Howie, I, Howie.
I have a question.
Okay. Sorry, Howie.
I can take this to Public Works Committee, but I don't know what you want. I mean, there's like five different, different things that you're saying you want. Like you don't want warnings, you don't want a notice, you don't want sixty hours, you don't want twenty-four hours. You don't like the twenty seventeen rules, but yet you don't like these rules. Now, do you want them just to make new rules? Based on other cities?
Just to look at it and see if they're okay with it.
But what don't you want? Because if they're okay with it and they send it back to you, then are you going to change it?
Yeah.
Because now you've got four people that are just going to look at this and I don't know what they're going to compare it to. I think it's if you could just write down what you do or don't like about it and it can be adjusted however you want. But right now, if I think if I just go to Public Works Committee and say fix this, they don't know what to fix. I mean, there's, there's like six different things going on that you may, that you do like, you don't like. I mean, at one time, everybody liked the no notice, then everybody didn't like the no notice. And then we went to reinspection fee to solve that. And now we're going back to no reinspection fee. And you've got out of town people that you don't, that you want extra notices to. In town people, should they get an extra notice? Or not notice? See, there's a whole bunch of different things going on that. What what do you want that committee to actually decide? Do you want to care everybody else's?
That was the same, that was certainly the same confusion I had at the meeting last week. There seemed to be a concern about out of town landlords or out of town property owners. And a comment was made of how in the world would we expect a letter to get to Arizona? And my response, if I'm being honest, is it's not our responsibility. You know?
Bill?
Let me comment and hopefully provide something for Howie since I feel partially responsible for getting us where we are. The, I think the chart shows us some things. I would have no problem at all with the going back to the twenty-four hours for both business and residential, so consistent with most of the communities nearby. And the hundred and fifty dollar fee. You know, we provide, you know, we take a look at it if it's after the twenty-four hours. It's cleared and there's the hundred and fifty dollar charge. You know, it would do away with the inspection fee, the reinspection fee, which is what we did impose or forgive or or waive. Consequently, where we would gotten with twenty-four hours and just go ahead with the clearance is, you know, pretty comparable and in some cases more than the charge in other communities and we get things cleaned in a shorter period of time. I would agree with Linda that the key concern is safe walkable sidewalks. I think the timeframe that is created by the renotification, the reinspection is 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 too long. My motion in in waiving the hundred and fifty was really the three hundred seemed to be excessive in terms of the dollar amount. So I'm I'm all for twenty-four hours. And, you know, then it's cleared and the charge hundred and fifty is made.
I think there still should at least be a reinspection fee. We we have to be able to pay the people that are doing these.
The reinspection only makes it wait longer. You know, if you're going to say twenty-four hours, then there's not a reinspection. It's over twenty-four hours, so the crews are there and they clean the sidewalk. The only reason for the reinspection, the reinspection doesn't accomplish what you're asking for, Linda. It it makes the sidewalks unsafe a longer period of time.
Mm hmm. Yeah, you're right. Yep, as long as we keep, you know, the the amount. It seems like if we keep our amount at a hundred and fifty minimum, that it really, I mean, common sense would tell a person that you only, you really only want to pay that once. And maybe, maybe what we can do. I know that there's a lot of people in this area. This would be something a little, trying to be a little more proactive, but maybe what we need to do is start talking about start talking about it back to school. Remember, if you're going, you're flying south for the colder weather. You know? Remember that you are responsible for your sidewalks or whatever, you know, maybe if we start putting that out into some of our newsletters.
We we put that in a lot of newsletters. It's on, it's on the website. I mean, it's, it's even with the snow parking tickets. There's a huge amount of information that goes out.
Yeah, I've seen it in a lot of spots myself.
And it's just, I guess, sometimes people, some people just won't do it. You know, other people just, you know, hope it melts. And then, you know, I mean, this last one had ten days to shovel it. It didn't happen. So so, I mean, that's, you know, so but the main thing is just whatever, it's just a consistency of what you want to do. So and the inspection fee is is partially to give them a warning to go ahead and do it. And then the second inspection, first inspection, you get your warning. It's one time. After that, the inspection fee is just because you just don't get it. You just, or you don't care. So so the next inspection fee doesn't. The sixty hours was originally because when we didn't send out warning letters, people would be gone on a weekend. If they left a Friday, they wouldn't be back until Monday. So there were a couple of them, like just maybe say a couple of businesses, we had to go and clear them on Sundays or a couple of the you know, just places we would clear on a Sunday because they were a complaint situation, then they would be mad. That was the only reason the sixty hours happened. Was so that people could get back in time from a weekend for residential. You know, like around the holidays or something. That was kind of the original part of that sixty hour change. Because there were no warnings at that time. So so all of that stuff can get changed back, but the, I I don't know, from doing most of code enforcement, the no warning gets a lot more complaints than getting a warning and you just didn't care to follow through. So but but if you want a no warning to be in, we'll have to change the ordinance again, you know, for some of those things. Or if you want a reduction in the, well, not not so much for a warning, but we'll have to change the ordinance to reduce the sixty hour situation. So so if it goes to Public Works Committee, I guess I'd probably I'm thinking that you want it to maybe get changed, look at a no warning system and reduce the hours. And just, just have it a straight, this is when it's going to get shoveled situation.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Unless they they come up with some strong objection to it. I, you know, I think our rationale is that it becomes dangerous if it sits there for twenty-four hours, particularly in areas that are heavily walked on. You know, areas that kids are walking to and from school. You know, you start to get that snow trotted on and it gets icy and little and people can fall and slide and yeah, and that's a problem. But yeah, see what they have to say about that. If they're, if they have some strong reasoning of why not to do it that way, then we should discuss it further.
Was there a motion? Was there a motion? I don't think there's been a motion.
Oh, I mean, it sounds like to me that, you know, it was it was listed as discussion, direction and possible action, and the direction was to take it to Public Works with the information that was kind of discussed here tonight, which to me says we need to find a way to shrink that timeline.
All right.
That's the removal of the notices or a reduction of the twenty-four, of sixty hours.
Yep. Okay. All right. So we're good to move on to general items. Got general items.
I have a general item.
My God, Linda, what took you so long?
I had to move my paperwork. The February municipal guide. The guide that we get from the League of Municipality had has a really good article on slip and fall cases. And I thought of, I I just wanted to kind of bring that to everybody's attention since we're talking about shoveling sidewalks tonight. But the other thing that I wanted to let you know is there is an excellent article in the January one about the EMS services and I just I hope that everybody's had a chance to look at it. And if you haven't, please do. It's it's we, it's all different.
Yeah, and some of our members did staff and people through the Zoom meeting on consolidation, right? So that's out there too. So, yeah, I know that we haven't having in-person counsel, so some of you have a few issues in your mailbox, but they're they really have great stuff in them. So I'm more than happy to deliver your mail that's in your mailbox in person. Just shoot me an email and I'm happy to do that. So just let me know. Anything else, Linda?
Oh, just remember to shop local. Lot of small businesses are still struggling, so Milton and keep everybody supporting our school and our community.
Yep. Anybody else for general items? Staff reports? Oh, police?
I thought you said Steve. I'm like. Yeah, well, that'd be me. We're still working our way through the background process to get a new officer hired. That's really my only update.
Okay, Howie?
We put out the applications for two employees, mechanic and crew person. And we'll probably start sweeping streets again pretty soon. So otherwise, just regular stuff going on.
Are you saying there will be no more snow? I I think I heard you say that.
I'm not saying no more snow and we're only about only about four inches away from being the most snow in the last twelve years. So.
Oh, so we need four more inches then to break a record.
Yeah. We don't need it though.
Okay, Mark E.
Awesome.
I think he's outing or something. Okay, who else? Inga?
I don't have anything.
Wow. Ashley?
Um, we are opening up on Thursday with Rock County moving to phase two, so we're allowing people to come in and browse.
How many people at a time?
We are going to do the twenty-five percent.
All right.
But we never, we never really reached what we could, our capacity, so.
Okay. Awesome.
So that that's Thursday. Meaning this Thursday.
Yes. Bernie at the library.
No, no.
The fourth.
Again, nothing. We talked about everything earlier.
All right. All right. You're still counting pennies over there, right?
Trying.
Um, okay, Al?
Yeah, the news from county today was certainly exciting news. We're gonna, library's gonna open up on Thursday. We're gonna open up on Monday because we have a number of staff that are out this week. And we want to be able to make sure that we can kind of be be ready for Monday. Kind of, you know, we kind of expected this news, but didn't exactly know when it was coming and I didn't find out until last night around like nine o'clock. So so that's exciting that we'll be back open next week, Monday. And yeah, just hopefully, hopefully starting to see some signs of normalcy as spring is around the corner.
So the city of Milton will be moving into phase two. And is there like a link on our website or a press release we're going to do to remind people what phase two is?
We have the the phase, well, the Rock County Phase reopening plan is obviously out there and our plan mirrors that. But we have our own reopening plan that that kind of follows the phases and that is on our website, but we can re-highlight it.
And I haven't heard, I don't think from all of the departments yet on what their plans are. So we want to make sure that whatever we send out from the citywide perspective, it's all encompassing of those departments and accurate. So.
Yeah, PD is opening up also with us on Monday and and Public Works is is, well, they've never really closed. But their lobby, I think Howie told me they're shooting for the fifteenth because Brenda is going to be out next week. I think I got, yeah, I've got that date right. I think I got, yeah, I've got that date right, the fifteenth, yeah.
So, anything else? All right, well, I predict that someday we will all be going on vacation. Maybe some people have one planned. And tonight, we are going to share what our favorite vacation food is. Our favorite vacation food.
Well, I, I, I will go first, um, because we still took, we talked about it a lot, so, um, Leslie and I went to Hawaii for our anniversary. Or I'm sorry, for our honeymoon cheese foods, um, which was eight years ago. And we, we went to four, four different islands and there's a chain of restaurants in Hu- in Hawaii that you can find on Kauai, Maui, the Big Island in Oahu called Dukes. And they have this thing called hula pie. And so every time we would go to an island, we would find the Dukes and we would order this hula pie and it is a piece of like cheesecake with ice cream and macadamia nuts and whipped cream and, and it's, I mean, it is humongous. And it was good, of course, but what's even better is you're in Kauai and Maui and it's like twenty degrees outside right now, so. So it's food consumed in a wonderful location.
Nice.
I will go, uh, mine would be anywhere close to the water where I can have fresh sushi.
Oh, yeah.
Like you catch it out of the water and then roll it in rice like right there?
And, and slide it down your throat.
That is fresh.
Guacamole, but only on the beach in Cancun.
Hate it. And you know, even if you only vacation in Wisconsin, there, there's got to be good food here too, right? Bill Wilson has to be so extra.
If you're ever in Burlington, Vermont and want the best french fries in the world, Al's is the place to go. Uh, so Al, you've got a, you've got to get there. The, um, I, I can tell you all the dives in all the states from our consulting years, the other favorite that I'd put up there is a little stand, uh, in Maine called Red's Eats. And Red's Eats is where you can get your lobster rolls, uh, and the lobster rolls are, um, incredible and, and fresh. And, um, the shack is about the size of the hamburger, Whedle's hamburger stand uh, up in, uh, Jefferson, you know, just a tiny little, uh, shack kind of a place. Uh, but they've got, um, uh, all of the awards from all of the big rating agencies that, uh, put their stars on, you know, major restaurants and stuff for a lobster roll, so. Al's for french fries in Burlington, Vermont and Red's Eats in Maine.
And, and Teresa, Bill just screen shared for us, so that's what we are all giggling about.
Uh, fresh boiled gallop, broiled gallop. Um, love them.
Nice, I don't know how we're all in Wisconsin and we're just like, I just want to be by the ocean.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got two and they aren't by the ocean.
Okay, good.
For place, Wit's BBQ in Alabama and Tennessee. Great barbecue, Wit's barbecue. I grew up going to one that was basically a trailer and they give you a kind of a container of meat and they give you hot dog buns straight from the grocery store. Or hamburger buns, rather, straight from grocery store and you make a great barbecue sandwich. But traveling overseas, I love lamb.
Hmm.
Great.
I've never had that.
Thank you.
Howie?
Uh, bar burgers at all various places and Waffle House breakfast.
Hey, I'll second the Waffle Houses. Ash brown scattered, covered and smothered.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have to say mine was Aunt Sonia's. And that place had the best pancakes that you could ever eat, I don't know what it was that they put in there, but, and then their coffee. Coffee is just perfect. That's down in Illinois.
So my favorite vacation food was when I was in Paris. And it wasn't just wine either, it wasn't the daily bottle of wine, it was the daily bread. The fresh bread that like everybody got bread every day. So that was mine, that's mine, and then my second would be anything out of the ocean for the most part.
I'll go with a pizza grouper or a horseshoe at Darcy's Pint in Springfield, Illinois.
Yeah, I thought it was going to have something to do with Wrigley Field.
He's Illinois.
Downstate.
I went to Key West a couple of years ago and I still think about the iced coffee that I had there, so.
Key West, I have not been there in forever.
It's been so long since I've been on vacation that I don't know if I remember how to do it anymore, um, but the one weird meal, I guess, that I always think about is when I was studying abroad in Ecuador, we went to, um, Vilcabamba to do some hiking through the mountains and our tour guide had this tuna sandwich for us and we were like four miles into this uphill hike and it was the most delicious tuna sandwich I'd ever had in my life and I haven't been able to recreate it. Um, it's, it was nothing special, it was like canned tuna on bread, but at that moment, it was, it was wonderful. Otherwise, the Food and Wine Festival at Disney World because I can eat anything. And when we were there, the goal was to get something at each station, so it was nice to try some different things that we normally wouldn't.
Disney World, yeah, going around the world, right? That was really fun. All right, I'm not sure if we have two marks left or what is going on here, so unusual. Are you guys playing together like?
Going to blink. Mark Blanger is trying to pretend like his internet froze, he's just going to sit there until we call it during the meeting.
We'll make Mark go first then, next time.
For favorite food, it would be, uh, generally any local cold beer. To meal in every can.
I can get with that, yeah. Now you took Mark E's, so I don't know what he's going to do.
Mark like salamander.
Yeah, you put on a stick and cook it on a campfire. No, I, I just like tried different foods, but, uh, the, the festival at Upcat was fun. There's another place at Hollywood Studios we, we were there called the Fifty's Primetime Cafe, kind of fun. Server would smack if you put your elbows on the table and that kind of stuff, so it's kind of like grandma's kitchen, you know?
Addis, yeah, were they on roller skates or anything?
No, but they had the, the full getup, you know, from the era, it was all period, all the, all the, all the, um, seating areas and the plates and the, the meals were all, you know, nineteen fifties type meals and it was fun.
It was very fun. Did I miss anybody? So the, the question that you didn't get asked tonight, did any of you see on social media the lawyer that accidentally turned himself into a kitten during a court hearing, so?
That's awesome.
So I was going to ask you if you could turn yourself into an animal on a Zoom meeting. What animal would that be? But I decided to go with food instead because as you know, I have not eaten since breakfast.
I think we should all do that for one of our meetings.
I think for sure we should.
You know, we don't know how much, how long this is going to go on for, we're going to have to do it at some point.
Yeah.
I think Scott rolled his eyes twice tonight, I think the chief, I think there was like.
Bill's already got it.
Bill, I was going to do that too, but this computer doesn't have filters on there, so I can't join you.
Sorry, Ryan, that's an old one and Teresa, Bill turned himself into a pig with a video filter.
Oh, no.
On purpose, though, on purpose, he meant to do it.
Duke cat ears next.
But unlike the attorney, Bill could change himself back to human. All right, you guys are awesome. So next meeting, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, that is the day before St. Patrick's Day, so you can wear green and beads. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So, uh,
in a second, Bill, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I just noticed that our friends from the media left.
Yeah, they failed, they failed.
They did.
You know what, I think sometime we should change the agenda and move it up. Like number one and just switch things up for the media. Mark is not, Marcus is like not approving it right now, so I'm.
No, you, but you could, you could, when you had to go to approve the agenda, someone could make a motion to move team building.
Yes.
So that way they don't know it's coming.
Right, and then we could all turn into animals. Okay, all those in favor, we already voted, right, we're gone, we're out of here, stay safe.